...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. Trying to keep the wrong time. We're pretty close, so I will look for the approval of the agenda. Do we have anything to add to this agenda?
No, but there's something we're taking off. The gentleman at eight thirty-five, Roger Shindal, cannot make it this week, so he was scheduled for a different week.
Okay, so we negate that.
Yeah.
Eight thirty-five appointment, and that's the only changes?
That's the only change.
So we're gonna have some free time.
Oh, good.
I would make motion to approve. Does that change?
I'll second Bruce's motion with the change.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve. Minutes from seven twenty-seven.
I looked through. I didn't see anything in there, so I'll make motion to approve.
We're here. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. General public concerns from anyone? No general public concerns. Hearing none, and our negation of eight thirty-five lets move down a bit and talk about our approval for the custodians.
And before you get into it too far, we received back the rapid drug tests from the hospital and then also the recommendation from the sheriff. Everything was fine. Everything looks great on the background checks and let's say both Arturo and Paul. So, everything's good.
Did you get the official word they are starting today?
Yes. Yeah, I saw it now.
Well, they both are starting?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
They sent me an email and left, so I'll take what she got.
Yes.
Response, because that, in that meantime, when you were sending that, I was checking them and getting the response from August third.
So, as of August third?
Yep.
Okay.
And I met with Arturo yesterday. I was up there catching up on some stuff, so I just called him. I said we wanted to stop up and grab the keys, because Dave needed them to finish up Friday night. And then he just laid them on my desk before he left. So, he came up there and he picked them up. And then Paul was just here at the color when I came in, so I handed him his key, so, for August.
Great. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the start date for Arturo Marquez, full-time Humboldt County Custodian, as August third.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve. And now we have the same for Paul.
I'll make a motion to set Paul's start date August third.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Now we have it. And in my discussion with both of those folks, gentlemen, last week, they've been in the courthouse, they've, this is what they, Bill, to some degree, I think Paul had a chance to, well, Bill was still around, so wished them well. They're just under the wire, but accomplished what we set out to get them to test with the previous custodians, so. And they are, Paul and Arturo, obviously work together, you know, well, for hopefully a long time, but getting up to speed here these next few weeks with what they explained to me, so. Think we're starting a real good start with both two gentlemen. Now we have the Humboldt County Senator Landfill Commission Financial Report.
T.P. Anderson puts this together for us. And I believe things are running pretty smoothly out there, our, all our test reports are coming back good. Secretary Rhodes did some spilling of the low areas, 'cause there's an old trench fill out there that keeps kinda settling over the years, every so many years you gotta fill it in, 'cause DNR does not like standing water. There's a pond the size of this table they have a fit, which is crazy. So if they happen to come out after a rain, they have...
Then they're standing water.
Then they're standing water.
So what do you, what do you do? You just take some dirt out and fill it up?
Take some dirt.
We take dirt out and a couple loads of dirt. I don't know how many they ended up hauling out here this, was it last week?
Week or two, or maybe it's two weeks ago.
Probably two weeks ago, we hauled dirt out there and filled it. To my knowledge, we haven't seeded it yet.
No.
Because every time we throw seed down, it's just the rain decides to not come our direction and...
So they bail out them? I mean...
Yeah, they're...
Used for hay or...
Yeah, it's rented. It's leased, that one's leased out to someone and they hay it, and then they do the cropland. And then the old one, they just hay that. And it has to be just grass, because they can't have any deep rooted, like alfalfa, you know. Be a lot nicer to get alfalfa, but they can't. And then we had D.N.W. brush control, we were out there and sprayed some willows that were growing, and so, it looks pretty good out there.
I got a question for you, Rick.
Yep.
On rental income.
Yes.
Is that, the land, like you said, leased to the...
Leased land.
Whether it's farm, a little bit of farm, or the...
A little bit farm, a little bit of hay.
Not sure where that comes from.
Mm-hmm. The, uh, old, I call it the old, old landfill. We adjusted the lease down, because with the mapping they have these days, he was set up, his acreage was actually not accurate on his... He was paying for about six acres that he really wasn't getting.
Okay, well, that's good.
So...
So you're talking the old, old ones?
The old, on this side, on the block.
West side of Torrance County, K.
Yep. So...
I would say we got the old landfill and the old, old land.
Yep.
For all the old guys, there was an old, old, old one, huh?
Yeah, the old, old, old one, I got it, I got it.
As a kid, I remember going out.
Fuck, right!
I remember burning. Well...
Okay. I'll make a motion to place on file the Humboldt County Landfill Financial Report.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve. On file. Well, so I imagine we're pretty well held to our times, so we could, let's do our committee report, see what we have going on this past week.
Well, about the only thing I had, I was out to landfill doing inspection out there, seeing what Ben had done out there, and it looked good. The lagoon is down. We've shut the valve off underneath the landfill that where the leach aid comes out and we pump it into the lagoon, 'cause Dave Minnickus from marine engineering thought he'd like to, 'cause we were constantly hauling water, basically. And so we thought we'd try and experiment, shut the water off and see what it does to our test wells, and they haven't changed any.
Not a good idea.
So, we thought it'd save us some money, and this fall, he's gonna test them again, and if we need to, we'll open them up and pump the water into the lagoon and then have to haul it away, but...
Has it ever potentially run over that?
It could, it could. That's why we shut it off, 'cause it was gonna run over, when we had that real wet year last year.
This year, it hasn't?
No, now it's way down.
Okay.
Bullfrogs in there like crazy.
Well, that's a good sign.
Yeah. 'Cause typically, back before, oh, probably four years ago, the DNR made us change the plumbing underneath the landfill, 'cause it used to go to a manhole, this water, and then run out to the dredge ditch. But they said it had to meet drinking water standards. You were, had to be able to drink that water that was coming out of that landfill.
Is that when they made you put it in the retention pond?
No, that pond is bigger.
Oh, that's bigger.
But when we shut that manhole off, now that water went up higher, then it would go into the leach aid pond, so...
How much, do you know how much longer that...
Twenty, twenty-six.
Okay, so it's longer downhill slide, with all that?
Yep. Monitoring, yeah, all the monitoring, and we are gonna switch from quarterly to, I think, annual monitoring here.
Okay.
So that will save us some money, too. So, 'cause all our numbers have been good for so long that I think they're gonna let us do that.
Good.
Good. I had nothing.
I had a BA meeting on Tuesday, and since he's only wanting one person in the office down there, I went down Monday afternoon and approved all the claims, is all I think I have.
On Tuesday the twenty-eighth, I had a decategorization meeting, my conference call that afternoon. Got that done. They asked me to completely explain decategorization, but I will tell you that we have a new director for the three counties that were in Hamilton, Wright, Humboldt. And again, I said this was a conference call. She'd already been approved. There was just some business that had to be taken care of at that time. So we're hoping, it's an every other month generally meeting, we're hoping in September we're gonna meet in person at the Hamilton County Courthouse like we normally do, because again, we all know all these conference meetings, but so, anyway, there is a new director. I think it's kind of a, a good thing, a very good thing for that board, but please don't ask me to try to explain decategorization, 'cause it's very confusing. So anyway, that was good, that was good, and that's the only official meeting I had last week.
I forgot to mention, I got an email. I didn't get my email read last week until last night, but my guess is looking for a dispatcher and full-time, part-time drivers in Humboldt and Ford Dodge.
For buses?
For buses.
Do you volunteer?
Volunteer.
You did, did you day?
No.
Look, they don't give any bus drivers, but they'd be interested in letting me use their shop for the winter. First, I went to that shop, it's pretty nice.
Yeah, that's a nice shop.
It is a nice building. You could throw that in there, wasn't...
I would put my trailer in there. No, they are looking for drivers and dispatcher, dispatcher Ford Dodge, driver in both.
Did they say how many drivers?
Didn't say, but part-time and full-time, so they're looking for both.
I think it's hard to get employees right now.
Yep. Just, we'll do it for you. Like I said, I'll have it on the agenda for Monday for official approval.
Things we have a public hearing, we can't do, let's go.
No, we can't.
But gotta get stuff.
I have two things for you.
Yeah, I did, perfect. What do you have?
Remember, we had talked with Renee about having an initial meeting as far as the union negotiations go. We sent out whether the tenth, the seventeenth, and the twenty-fourth would work for you guys. For most of you, it was the seventeenth, so Renee said that'd be great. She put it on the calendar, and we also reserved the twenty-fourth, so if there's anything you don't get done on the seventeenth, then it'll be scheduled after a regular board meeting. It's not a real public meeting, it's a strategy session, so you've got the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth after your meeting that you can meet with Renee and go over some of those things.
Did you schedule the seventeenth?
Yes, I did. And she also wrote down the twenty-fourth. So if you need it, it's there. If you don't need it, then that's okay.
I bet you won't be doing it.
So it depends on whenever the agenda is, you know, to see how big it gets.
Choking myself on the desk, and I dropped my pen.
So just want you to make sure and get that on your schedule.
So, I've never been involved in that. How do we talk with her, and then do they put proposal back to Secretary Rhodes? I mean, then it goes back and forth, or do they?
Yeah, we put, we'll put together a proposed proposal, so probably put theirs together, then Renee and Matt will visit, and then usually, sometimes we'll, when it gets to that finer details, the union guys will be downstairs and we'll make decisions up here, and we'll go back and forth.
Could be interesting this year, because technically, the only thing that they can do is wages. Years ago, they can negotiate every single word in a union contract.
So it's gonna be a lot different.
Yeah.
Haven't you been... I've been, yeah, I've been hanging through it and making notes or, you know, questions of how we can change language from this to that.
I've been getting notes from PERT, the Public Employment Relations Board, and there will be an election this year, so there's a timeline they sent me as to when things have to be done. So the county's initial contract or warning has to be put together, and that's when I gotta hold Renee and say you need to talk to the board and get this going, because it was sometime at the end of this month that they needed some wording. And then we have to send them a census of all the people who are union eligible, and then they send notes out to all those people and say on this date and this time, there will be an election for that. And so, that's what'll happen.
That's good, that seventeenth will be good.
Yeah.
It's not just deputies in the, or Secondary Rhodes, don't deputies come in under that too, or the whole courthouse?
Um, not courthouse deputies, sheriff deputies, too.
Sheriff deputies.
And then jailers and dispatchers. The conference boards would be the assessor employees. We have, trying to think if we have anybody right now that's, I think a couple gals upstairs maybe are union eligible, but that's about it for courthouse, union people. Oh, and that's just for, I'm just so...
Full-time is not?
No.
What other fun stuff have you got?
Okay, um, we had one company nurse report, that's confidential, so we'll let that out. We actually had two, but the gentleman was actually doing work for the city of Humboldt, so I called them and after talking with Ben, and we got that straightened out. So that's not our claim.
Is that, is that who covers the fire department of the city?
Yes. Last week, we had a couple of sheriff, quarterly, quarterly, annual reports. I forgot to have the stamp on there approved and typed in, so please date it last week.
Absolutely.
Mid-American came in. Janet had called and asked me if we got the second bill from Mid-American for Pioneer, and I said, no, all we've gotten was the one for the streetlight. So I'm not sure what the second one is. Oi, this is barely see, he's been out, so forget it. But anyway, I was supposed to be getting a second bill from Mid-American for something else, she said.
Probably electricity for the pump.
Electricity for the...
Oh, maybe that's what it is.
The lighting one should go down, and according to my guy, he was going to credit that last statement.
Okay.
Back to trying to see if we could revert back to lights for that last statement as well.
I wonder if this one has made you...
If I want to take the lights down, they'll just shut them off.
He was gonna take some down, but he's gonna offer a few.
It'll say electricity on there.
There's a landlord's...
The other one said, um, when I looked at the backside, it told me how many lights it was, you know, like seventeen lights, and this one does not say that. It's just an electric charge, so...
That would be the problem.
That's what I'm wondering, want to have that one overdate and see if...
But it's still technically a town, right, until...
During this month, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, until it's officially disbanded. Continue to get those things.
And then, then we'll be taking over this electric bill for the water?
I assume so. I mean, that was the biggest discussion when they talked about decertifying or decoupling as a counter, whatever they call it.
And she just paid it in advance on those, quite a bit. She paid it in advance, so that would cover for us, which is very nice. They have some funding they wanted to, so... I was getting Janet, I said, just because this gives, you know, say they have their hearing and everything is approved and you get this band, doesn't mean we can't call you with Pioneer questions, right? Yeah, I'll always be here for Pioneer questions.
No, do you want to look at this hearing? Oh, we'll get it, give it a...
Resident experts, yeah. We had something come through from another county. Our Auditors Association is so very good about sharing things that happen in their county, and what do you do if this happens, what do you do if that happens. And we've had this happen in the past, but we just went ahead and paid it. This particular county, which was Harrison County, had someone, or Harrison didn't know what's different, they had someone turn in bills for doing services for the courthouse, but it's been like for the past six years. They'd never turned in a bill, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, we better get these caught up. And they turned in all these bills, and they said, that's really not fair, because you're budgeting in this year to spend this amount of money, but they're claiming from six years back, so you really didn't budget for that expense at all. So Harrison sent a resolution, that her board did, that says that the Board of Supervisors approves any expenses claimed against the county shall be submitted for payment with one year of the date incurred. Claims submitted over the one-year threshold will be denied payment.
Fair.
I mean, it makes sense. We had someone turn in like three years' worth, and I went ahead and approved them. And this one, that's too long ago either.
I'm sure they're covering that a lot.
But I thought, you know, why do they turn it in in time like, that's not our problem, that's their problem. We're not doing their booking, but... And then plus, it helps you to budget. You're not taking a chunk of money out of this year that you didn't budget for if you had been back in the year before. But if you're interested, I can put a resolution together like this and bring it to you, but if you're not interested, I won't, I'll just leave it out.
Yeah, well, it's a good idea. Again, run into this too often when you're...
Not too often, but, you know, what if this one, like if one gal had seven, eight years?
Must have been, must have been taken off.
Seven, eight, yeah, yeah, it was.
I would think a year would be...
I think, well, who, who doesn't send a bill?
Yeah.
Well, there's some people that don't.
Sometimes I don't do my travel, my...
Well, there could be...
I'd be on that horse.
Yeah, there could be a leniency there where you could, you know, get something in on time, but not something that's several years old.
Yeah, I can see, I don't think it's a bad idea.
It's just, it isn't something that's gonna come into play, hopefully, ever.
Right.
Nobody'd be, she could have, so an auditor would have a record to say, well, it's...
There is.
Yeah, see, I had no reason to deny those other ones. Like, we don't have anything on the books that says we can't. I guess we will.
Typically, whether you're individual or a county, you don't usually call and pay for the bill.
That's right.
But also, being an auditor and knowing, you usually know that you probably have services done and they're expecting a bill, but...
And then as time goes on, you just kinda forget about it.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, obviously you do.
You say, why don't I expect them that bill next month, and it doesn't show up?
And you can't forget about it.
What if they put in there, say, a year?
Yes. And you can certainly change it if you want.
Well, I'd say I would tie it to the, when you said budgeting, we're in fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-one, whatever, twenty-one. Whatever year it is, but, you know, so we're in this fiscal year till the end of June. I think it needs to be tied to the fiscal year. Because when you said budgeting, put a year. Well, what if it's a year that overlaps a fiscal year and it's a big expense? There's nothing...
Yeah, 'cause are you going by the calendar, or are you going by...
I go by the fiscal year. Budget year, put it a year, in that fiscal year, the work is performed, or you don't get paid.
Yeah.
But what if, what if they do the work in June and give you the bill in July?
Well...
Then it's a different fiscal year.
Yeah, you turn your expenses on for six months, or a quarter, you...
You gotta have, like, you should probably put term, term it, one year from the date of service.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
No, I know what you're saying, 'cause sometimes that does happen.
Yeah.
And sometimes we like that to happen, that they did the work in early June, and really don't wanna pay until the next fiscal year for the new budget, but, boy, last year, we had Grau Scouts, and I think they were here for part of May, all of June, and part of July. I think they submitted a midterm bill in June, but then the remainder was in July. Right. It's all the same work, but that's fine. It's all the same work. Yeah. It's, it's just a protection for the, for something doesn't happen, like you said Harrison, how many, some, you got fifty thousand dollars in your bills, 'cause they had sent them for eight years.
Right, right.
Which is...
And then all of a sudden, it's like, oh, we're...
I don't know how that's having, pretty good studies check.
I was gonna say, I don't know, I think it's, what, visitors can operate without sending out invoices, but...
Right, right.
I think that, that makes sense, for, I think you should draft something.
Yeah.
Okay, I could do that. Most definitely. Um, last thing I have is, I put together letters to go to the custodial candidates. I did our full-time, our part-time, and then also me, two, the two didn't interview, just as a courtesy to let them know that somebody's been hired. So...
Okay, that's good.
Same warning that I used when I sent out to you. I'll give them to Erica when he has the minute, even maybe signals that get on board letterhead. So I thought that looked a little more special.
Yeah. I seen that.
All I did was change full-time to part-time and...
I think that's fair, Bruce, for me, and on the interviews, and we said they were going to get notifications.
Yes, we got notifications that they're, oh, their tests were good, so we're ready to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, 'cause I didn't, I, I would have not had a problem calling them, but I think this is more official. They got notifications and...
I know a lot of people, we've had a couple of calls, people wondering, you know, what happened. And I know a lot of people just feel better knowing, you know, is it still hanging out there? Will it be touched base?
I know, that's why, defer to Bruce, 'cause our, in our interview process, we said, you will be notified, but...
Yeah, yeah. And we know everybody gets paper, but just in case, they didn't see our paper.
No, I think this was a great idea. Thank you for doing it officially.
You're welcome.
I look forward to really good things from our new custodian candidates. I think they'll be a good team. I will meet with Arturo sometime today, and we'll go through some of the things that maybe Dave didn't think to mention to him. He already was aware of the court schedules, so I gave him a copy from what Sherri Miller had sent down to me, as far as when the next court dates are, like this court today, and then it skips for a week or two, and then there's court again. So that way, he'll have an idea of what things he needs to kinda keep an eye on up there, 'cause the courtroom would have to be completely cleaned.
Did they give him a guideline as to what has to be done up there, or what?
Dave has shown him, 'cause I even mentioned to him yesterday, he had to give you the equipment to use to spray and clean. Yep, yep, we don't have all that.
Awesome.
And then I'm assuming that Dave showed him where all the stuff is stored, as far as the chemicals and all of that, the cleaners that he'll need to use. I'm not sure if anybody had noticed the little place here in town that was taking back cans. It's no longer in business.
No, they moved.
Oh, they just moved?
They moved up on the West End building, so they just moved from there, it's a bigger building.
Awesome, because I have a lot of cans from the courthouse, and I didn't know, what am I gonna do?
Down at the West End building.
Okay, and they are open?
They are open.
Probably weren't over there in the highway anymore, and I thought, I'll do that, close up, or whatever, I guess they moved.
I was thinking the same thing.
Looked down to the West End building, 'cause I went over there with my wife's test, and now it's a new building.
Well, it's good to know that they're still here, so we can still get our cans, 'cause over the whole, since March, you know, nobody's been taking cans anywhere, and they just pile up. So we got those all out there yesterday, so they're in the back of my husband's pickup truck, and I just tried to figure out where I'm gonna take them.
You don't wanna do it?
No. And that's all I got.
That bill looks like it's from the well.
Okay.
It doesn't, uh, has to be just a...
I'm gonna put a little note down there, so I have an idea.
Yeah, they don't use that much electric to turn them. You only got, what, five houses?
Yeah.
It's a five.
Four or five.
And the elevator there, I'm sure, I'm sure the elevator uses some water.
Probably more during spraying season, when they use the chemicals, water.
Our, uh, our bridge project is finished. We got done Tuesday, I believe. They finished putting the guardrail on, and CD contractor moved in.
They finished putting the guardrail on, and seeing contractor moved in. Again, we could use a little rain up there, it'll let it steam germinate. But they put mulch on top of it, which will help hold any moisture in. The road is open back up. Uh, I think the plan for this week is to rock it, just trying to take care of all the that had on it, and later, get it into shape.
All right.
Our, basically, all of our contractors are done. PBC was done two Mondays ago, we're waiting on striking contractors to come in, took the striking down, four Dodge app, all of them, there were blacktop services, a couple of patching locations that don't exist later in the year. Yeah, the first time since March.
Side, they're on construction, you got that out of the way?
Good.
Well, it's gonna be a quiet summer.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're already in order.
That's true. Right.
But I figure we got, uh, the two blocks over projects for BCI, and early start date is middle of September, so...
Well, now we are officially at...
Go across the new bridge.
Busy?
Yeah.
All right.
Good.
Now, we're officially at, slightly past nine, so we have a public hearing, a first reading amendment to the county ordinance number twenty-six.
Let's open the public hearing.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. Public hearing is open.
Okay, and I don't know if you guys got the email from Dave or not, that he will not be able to be here today, but he did put together the wording for the amendment. He had John Beatty, the county attorney, take a look at it. John had no suggestions for changes, he was happy with it. So all I did was take it, and you'd have to have that three-inch gap at the top for the reporters' office to have the recording information up there.
Okay.
So I just took it, moved it down, and changed the font, so it wasn't as big as the one he originally sent to me.
Well, just an FYI, before, and I know there's discussions, Linda came in before this morning, and she's really not sure that, on this ordinance, because she thinks that, um, how does she put it? We lose our control on...
Yeah, we don't have any control over any of them, but they just want to come in and throw in a station.
Put them in here, there, and everywhere.
They still got a good building permit. I don't think we're gonna lose control, but she seems thankful, like...
She said she would rather see them come in and go before the, the board and do it that way. Have we had any other concerns?
Nobody's contacted.
Nobody's contacted.
Well, I, nobody called and said that he would be on, he just wanted, you know, an email. And I said, do you have anything, concerns you had? And James, he said, no. The, you know, he went back and forth through all this to, I think it, it mainly... getting it into a commercial status and allowing this done, because we didn't have a wording in the ordinance, such per Randy's...
Yeah, the way it sounded, it just made it really difficult to go through the process for someone to get a permit for this.
It really wasn't specific to what they wanted to do. And, of course, they went through the zoning, went through everything correctly, the zoning board met, and discussed it. You're on the zoning board, do you have anything to ask?
No. I, I had questions on whether or not it should be commercial or industrial, basically to Washington, too.
Just, basically, didn't have the wording for what they're looking for. There was nothing out there, any ordinance says anything in zoning anything for what they were wanting to do.
Right.
Whether, whether it's industrial, or commercial, or ag, the power companies has to pay a tax for every piece of property, or every piece of equipment they have in the county, and it goes to the state, and it pays back to us. So, uh, I don't see where it's gonna hurt, it's, it's a wash, really, back and forth, so it wouldn't matter which way it was.
Making it a little clearer, clear what they're doing.
Right.
Instead of, uh, exception, now we have an actual ordinance, but I think, like Dave said, I don't, I don't see losing any control of anything with this, because it could still be denied through the zoning board.
Yeah, they still have to get a permit.
They still have to get, yeah, they can't just come in and start building stuff.
And if there's any question, Randy can always bring the permit into you guys for...
Yeah.
And he would. They thought that was the reason that he did it, went through all of this, was to put it into...
He says it'll make it much easier next time to go through the process.
Right, that's the way I understood it, so that's why I figured, I just wondered if we had any other people that were concerned. If not, then I don't think we have any, I make a motion, closes the public motion.
I'll second Bruce's motion.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, close hearing. Now, a motion to approve the first reading of an amendment to the county ordinance number twenty-six.
I'll make that motion to approve the, well, not the Humboldt County ordinance twenty-six.
Second, Dave's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would like to read it. Do we have to physically read it?
You don't have to, you can do it.
I wanna read it. I will read it.
Okay.
With Humboldt County ordinance number seventy-one, an ordinance amending Humboldt County ordinance number twenty-six. Purpose, purpose of this ordinance is to amend article eight, commercial district, C dash one, section two, principal uses permitted. Be it ordained this third day of August twenty-twenty by the Board of Supervisors of Humboldt County, Iowa, the following ordinance amending Humboldt ordinance number twenty-six be adopted. Section two, principal uses permitted, be amended to include two point two-four electrical utility switching stations and/or substations. This ordinance shall be being effective from passage and publication.
If that was in two pages, would you have read that?
Possibly. If there was space that far apart, yes. If there were single stage, I could, you know, single stage, no. You can come to my bookkeeping. Well, we read.
Yeah. Being there is, doesn't seem to be much public objection to this, I'll make a motion to waive second and third readings of the Humboldt County ordinance amendment number twenty-six.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Anything else in regards to this ordinance? You have something that you're waiting to sign?
Yep, so you just started on.
All right. And, yeah, I, I mentioned that one for Randy, too, when he called. I said, what Rick just motioned, because I, I don't see any reason that we need to drag it on, so...
Well, as long as we didn't have a bunch of phone calls asking and inquiring, I don't have...
Yeah, you know, it's mainly just the language.
There's that.
Okay, there you go.
I see Harland and Dial are both out there, and I saw Rick Hopper went in the other.
Yeah, he's there.
If we want to make a motion to go to...
I think we can.
Do you have anything else for Randy?
No, I don't.
You gonna learn this many of stuff?
Mm-hmm.
You're done with us, then we can adjourn or no?
You can, yeah.
Okay.
You're tired of us?
No, I'm not tired of you, but...
Not yet, but don't crush your luck.
Yeah, there you go.
That's what I would say.
I'll, I'll make a motion to go to the drainings, then.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. We're in range.
All right, that was tricky.
Hey, man, I got a question.
You dress up. You look good. I mean, you, you can shake.
On, uh, eight-one-one, okay, George? You know, or deferred to Bruce, mentioned where they cut through a big power line up by the sex, or Irvington?
Irvington, probably. Or no?
Where was it? Was it Irvington?
No, it's up there by that mill on, uh...
Yeah, sure.
No, the other one.
Gilbert?
Gilbert, there.
I was just busy with, uh, my brother-in-law, who sits on the Midland Shore.
I wonder.
He'd have all kinds of issues.
Well, thank you.
With people digging through power lines, because people putting their power lines are, are locating, putting, having like asbills where the exact lines are. But isn't that the purpose of eight-one-one they're supposed to monitor?
Both the market, both locations are. We had one, uh...
But even if there's, even if they don't know of something that's in the ground, shouldn't they pick that up?
That's the point, they should get it.
Yeah, and they're not doing it.
Yeah, we had, we had a really bad, uh, they started us somewhere, you get a ton of hard bricks on, fired, we had a ton of people, the lines stand by, particularly for that, uh, we have a, I wish you had the midgall that you got.
Because I guess Midlands has had lots of problems. The contractors who installed the lines never registered them or filed them or whatever.
They do them over there.
So what eight-one-one was doing, they're just looking at the paperwork and say, oh, there should be three lines out there. They go out and find the three, and they leave, and they don't really check for anything else.
There's one in the paper this morning, but it's two workers down in Felling, had a high voltage line and killed both.
Correct, long time no see, yeah, yes.
Didn't put it on the paper.
In Robben, or Marter, or something?
Doesn't say that, all it says is two utility workers installing internet cables, dying, saw a astor strip in a high voltage underlying ground.
Have our guys really, just because eight-one-one's marking, have them look around, make sure they look, see like maybe there's posts route or something that maybe they may have missed.
There's, there's not much, uh, really county as far as very high energy lines. Uh, a lot of them are switching to overhead, just because, you know, Midlands got encouraged that they get intermittent power too, or they lose power on that line.
Oh, okay.
Uh, because they're old enough that they've been switching back to overhead lines.
A lot of it is, we found gophers, ground squirrels, what do you want to call them, the doves?
Right.
They chew through the rubber, and then as soon as they get a little tingle, they quit. It might be just a pinhole, but that'll eat itself in two.
Right.
So they're going back overhead on most of it.
Well, and for a while, they were taking, they were putting those, uh, uh, ag piles.
Oh, I mean, the conduit, taking...
But they're, they're, they still are, they're a gag. Fiber outfixes gonna talk to it.
But if you're out there to fix a tile, and you see it, you know, counties are going in with that, though, and digging to fix what they thought was a tile, and it was high energy.
Inside of it.
Yeah, so they could do that.
They'll put a ribbon in there when they're high, high energy, but they don't, they're channeled gas, they're supposed to put a young ribbon right above it.
We've got, uh, I know they do it on fiber.
Yeah.
They have a warning tape above it.
Yeah. Just remind the guys to be careful, just don't always trust that guy that marked them.
Yeah, yeah, we had one close call this year.
Sound good?
Okay, thanks, man.
You, uh...
I'm busy day-to-day. I'm just gonna go through, I have a fairly tough schedule, just gonna sit around, look at you.
All right. I might cut base, or do I?
Yeah, you're...
No, it's no bigger than that, just look out like that. Don't dig up any high voltage, so...
Just be called up to, ah, that base, okay?
All right, thanks, and see you guys.
Just remember we can call.
Marcus Holtenberg, logic manager.
Yeah.
Front team?
Yeah.
It's been a while since I've seen you, Phil, out here.
I like, I like, I almost like to say you guys look like doctors, but you don't, and I'm not gonna lie, I operate on me, so just so you know, even though you got a mask on. Yeah. You think we have to bother? You see, expecting to, for questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whatever questions come up, we can answer them. Now, you wanna flip that window down a tiny bit, flip by a little bit?
I could, but I'm not sure if I can get it.
Rick doesn't know how to get, get in the ladder.
Yeah, you gotta be a little color.
Well, we're past nine fifteen, so we're official for our discussion and, uh, whatever action on the engineering asbills for D D number thirty-five, Ranch C. We have a very interested party attendant, uh, guessing these are the asbill plans to date?
Yes.
So...
Which side of the person is Rick's, or not?
Seems I was one night, I'll just, what I know about it. I got a phone call the other day from Dial, and said that, um, they've been having some issues with trying to get these asbills put in, put together, so that they would be able to basically put this thing to rest. Um, this thing started, what, in nineteen seventy-one?
Seems like it.
Seems like it's been going on most of our life. Um, and I guess, long story short, um, I got done with Dial, so I called Trish, and then I told him that, or told Trish that I'm gonna have Dial call you back, because I, I can't remember all of the things that he, um, I said that they were looking for. So Dial called Trish, gave her a list of stuff that we were looking for, um, then I proceeded to call Rick and invite him to come down here to try to get this stuff, so that we can have it done. Um, I guess, long story short, um, I think I'm a little disappointed that we, we don't have all this together, but I guess, Rick, you're welcome to elaborate on this, because I know those gentlemen behind you are in the same boat, so...
What I'd like to do is kind of review the six things that were listed, what we have and what we don't have, and then talk about responsibilities.
Okay.
Um, Trish emailed me, um, six things listed. The first one was French drains. Uh, we have, we call them clean water area drains, and we have a, we have a latitude, longitude for the French drain. Um, it's on the list as clean water intake at station thirty-five plus fifty. The second one is ag grains, well, tile from Harlem Schultz. We have the coordinates of that connection. It's listed as, uh, let's see, let's see. Ag grains, well, tie in. We don't have the station, but we have coordinates, latitude, longitude, we'd be glad to stay.
So is that the halfway, by halfway down, Rick, on here?
That's the second item, AEW tile from Harlem.
Right, I'm talking on here, that's the ag well tie in that's on here, on this sheet?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's number two, is, is up there?
Yeah, and we'd be glad to state that on charge, of course. Three, tile line up the north half of section fourteen, that, uh, tile's name is listed there.[1695.62] Three, tile line up the north half of section fourteen, tile's name is listed there. Um, we'd have, I'd like to meet with Dial and look at that because we have some shown on the plan sheets. I don't know if that one is one of them, it may not be. So I need to talk to Dial. Uh, item four, eight inch tile line up the north half of section fourteen, Dial listed here. There is one shown on sheet two seven, again, I'll make this up to Dial, see if that one is, is one we have. Five, county line lateral C two, we show the connection, we did not give coordinates. We'd be glad to show the coordinates of that. It's on the as-built, just listed by station, it's not on there with coordinates. We had to look at the plan sheets to get that station. Um, item six, private tile line from Randall Wallen. Um, again, I'd like to talk to whoever has any information on it. One thing we talked about in the office was if there's any chance of Dial willing to work with us, we'd pay him to expose whatever needed to be. Um, the question then comes responsibility. Um, I'm not dodging responsibility, we're accepting responsibility, but here's what the specs called for. The contractor shall provide the program, the engineer shall each tile mention before his back build, include that with location information. We are to provide the engineer with GPS location of each tile location and the size and material of each tile connection. Why we're accepting the responsibility is we should have known they didn't have those. Our inspectors didn't know.
That's my question, the contractor does not have them?
We've got what he has supposedly.
Okay, so you've gotten all his information?
They say so.
Okay. That was my, one of my questions.
I think there's three or four things here that we're gonna have to do some exploring or come up with a plan to find these. If there's any reason they need to be found, we have to find them, one way or another.
Well, they need to be found because they were supposed to be marked.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
Whether whether we feel we need them or not, we need to have them found and, and put on as built because that's in the contract.
Again, I'm not avoiding responsibility here, but I think the contractor should be involved also because of this. If they're not, if they refuse, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, before, yeah, we have contact information from Marcus Schultenberg, project manager. Are you familiar with him?
Yes.
Was he at the third one?
Yeah, I think he's, uh, he's the big dog. Isn't he from over there?
Sure. He is the owner.
Um, so, but before we call him, I'd just like to, because we have the primary concerned landowners here and, and what, what you folks have to say, what you guys have to say about getting information or what you, what we need to get ported away here.
Well, in my opinion, we paid extra for somebody from the engineering office who gone, he there.
On site.
On site. But, to me, I don't know why they don't have to start with. He was there, so he comes up, got the location. I don't see any, um, crossovers that on section twenty-three on the as-built plans. There isn't one on, at the station seventy-one hundred, somewhere around station seventy-one hundred on the ground. Um, the French drain that he said is at thirty-five fifty is not at thirty-five fifty, it's clear around, um, close to nine thousand, thirty-five hundred is, um, I think south section, part of section eleven. French drain should be up around, uh, should be up around eighty-eight hundred. So they're off five thousand feet.
That's a long ways.
Yeah. And the open drain that he said is there is, shows fifty feet north of, uh, where they cut into my eight inch connection, and it's south. So I don't know what to do with any of it. I couldn't get all that down. I'd like to meet with Dial, if we can resolve a way to proceed at this point, I'd like to get all that written down.
Okay.
So I'm, just wanna make sure we're clear, we don't have the correct and or all of the information on as-built plans.
That's the way it appears to me.
It's either not correct or it's not on there. And Rick claims that maybe it wasn't provided, either the contractor provided you, or they said they provided you with everything that they had.
Yes.
So it's still missing some information.
Again, we're not gonna dodge responsibility here. There's eight inch that they put in just north of, I hadn't put in an eight inch that I could connect to it, just north of the one lateral that comes across, uh, from Normans. And I got done last call trying to find it, and I couldn't find it. I mean, I know it's there because I got a picture of that, but I can't find it. And I hadn't put in a six inch up on James section eleven that I could hook onto just in case something happens, the old tile that I could hook onto it, and I couldn't find that one either. I mean, they didn't mark nothing, so I'm just out there...
Blind.
Blind. And I spent half the day looking for it and probably a day looking for it on other eight inches.
Did you ever find it?
Never found it. So, um, but I, you know, you've been missing my equipment, same with them all.
Right. Yeah, right.
You know, so it's...
Yeah, but do you have a, do you have my GPS locations?
I haven't, I don't have any.
You don't have any?
If I had GPS...
I was gonna say, if you have a GPS location, it's not maybe for the inch, but it's within a couple of feet. You can do your, you can do your location to find it.
I weigh over five hundred thousand feet of tile and I can come within a foot of any one of mine.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't understand why we don't have that.
You don't have any of those. There's, that's the one that's not on there, those two examples.
Those two are the ones I really need. There's another one that's on there, but I got the GPS location, I said, could have replaced my line, but I know we're not that. But here I have, trying to do something and, even if they would have put a eight inch or something, that I could come up with, but I have nothing.
We can certainly call this Marcus Schultenberg, he's, sounds like he's expecting what we may call.
Mm-hmm.
Just have a general discussion. I think that would be fair, means everyone's here.
Yeah.
So you just take the contractor's take on all this.
Hi, Marcus, this is Trish at Humboldt County, and we're in the board meeting right now, and I guess you were expecting us to call, is that correct?
Yes, that was the last conversation I guess I had today, but it started with a field trip, so you have time to hang out, wait for them.
Okay, hang on here, try to turn you up here. All right, can you hear us okay?
Yes, yes.
All right, I'll let the guys take over here.
Okay.
Uh, hi, Marcus, this is Eric Underbird, um, board of supervisors. We're just trying to sort through all this, uh, we got most of the primary landowners involved in this, uh, district here. Concerns on, uh, we don't have some things on the as-built information to date, uh, connections and such that should be there, uh, or not, and we have Rick Copper here, and he said that, so far, he said that you provided him with all the information you had, we just thought we'd have a discussion and see where that was so that we can get any missing information, uh, added on here.
Uh, yeah, so I guess to my knowledge, uh, when I threw everything that, uh, that I've got, I talked with, um, our guys that run site, you know, doing, doing the daily thing, um, the, the inspector that was there, I believe that he was GPSing all of the connections, and then if he wasn't there on site, we did the best that we could to get a coordinate off our phone, and then we sent those into him daily. Um, other than that, I don't really have anything super specific as to where those connections are. I've got a token amount of, uh, pictures that are in my server that's on it, but there's only like three, um, because talking with, uh, with Shane and those guys that are out there, they just did on the daily, um, to keep that up the record.
Okay, so any, there again, any, uh, locations, coordinates for connections that you've had, that would have had, you would have sent them to Jacob and Westergaard?
Yes, to my, to my knowledge, yes. Everything that, that we had documented should have, uh, should have been passed along because when we're out there in the fields, deciding coordinates and everything else like that, there's not really a good way for us to, uh, get down a station number or exact spot. That was, that was a good thing with, um, with having that inspector there as much as he was because, yeah, he was doing a good job of GPSing where they were at.
Okay.
So how was then, this is Rick Copper, how was that information sent to Jacobson Westergaard? You said daily. Was that email to someone in our office?
It was, it was text message to the inspector.
Okay.
And when you say inspector, Marcus, is that's, uh, one of the employees of Jacobson West, Westergaard that was out there keeping track of it?
Yeah, I, uh, I forget the fellow's name, I'm sorry, trying to jog my memory here, um...
Was that Jordan?
Yes.
Jordan, yeah, Jordan or Jared or however you, yeah, something like that, Jordan. That's, that's the correct pronunciation.
Yes.
Yeah, I tracked down the data in my phone, it sounded goofy.
Right. And I would just point out, we parted ways with him as soon as this project was over, and he's now working for Bolton and me. Just a side like, again, not avoiding responsibility, yeah.
Is it possible to retrieve these text messages?
I will contact him and see if there's any way. I, I don't know. I'm not optimistic, the texts.
Well, please correct me if I'm wrong by saying that, what we're, biggest concern is we're missing information. We're missing locations...
Locations of tie-ins and...
Of, of, tie, yeah, tie-ins, connections, and Dial was out, knowing that there's, they're out there, but not having a location, a GPS coordinate to find it.
Yes.
So we're missing some information that's hopefully floating around out there that has up to date is not on the as-built maps. So that's what we're really after, is to get everything on here that should be on here.
And we're not gonna live forever, you know what I mean?
That's right. I mean, this, this is for a hundred, a hundred years from now.
Yeah.
Well, when they wanna do some work, they...
They know what they're in for.
Yeah.
I can, um, I can do a little bit of, uh, extra here on my end and try and make down, um, uh, communication with Lynn. I think that he's still, he's one of those guys that actually stuff around. I'll see, I'm not guaranteeing it, but there's a good chance that he saw that picture of that stuff on his phone, so I can try and lump some of that down and get that over to you guys.
That would be very good.
We'd appreciate it very much, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem, yeah, let me, let me get off the phone here, I'll call, I'll call Shane, you know, we call him, I'll be there to holler and, um, and do what I can do, and then, uh, if I find pictures, like, I think, you know, there's only a couple that I saw that are on our server, um, stuff that I had there, stuff that I ran our tablet, um, but, uh, I'll get you guys over what I have, for sure.
I would make the suggestion you get that directly to Jacobson Westergaard because there, you will be updating any information on the as-built.
Yes.
Um, that is more helpful.
I, I appreciate that coming directly to me, um, I don't know if you have an email or not.
Yeah, I got both of them, I got you guys' like, uh, office email as well as your, uh, your direct email too, Rick, so I'll definitely make sure that we get those over.
Yeah, directed would be better, because we get some of the old, some, some of our messages still on the old email and it's a little harder to find.
Right.
Trish, do you want in on that email? I mean, they...
Yeah, if you could copy me on that.
Copy it on here.
That's a good idea.
So would we at least run in on the loop?
Know what the correspondence is, and then Marcus, Rick is gonna visit with the landowners, and he's already started a list of, uh, concerns and, uh, the missing information, if you will, so...
Okay.
He'll have that, uh, you guys can correspond back and forth, and please include us as Humboldt County from the Drains District, to Trish.
What's in the email?
Do you, Marcus's email? Do you have your, it's not on that one.
No, I think that I, I have all of your guys' emails, your email, email, it's going to you.
Okay. Good.
Yeah. That would cover the Humboldt County part of it.
As long as she's good, it will, so we can get, she can send it to us.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, will anybody else have anything for him?
Don't.
No, I think we're good, thank you very much for helping us out.
No, that's, that's not a problem, it's one of those, one of those things that it's tough going through it and, and, uh, as far as contractor getting info out was not a good way to get coordinates to everyone, which the phone thing works okay, but yeah, GPS and it's from the inspector is, is the best, the best problem, but, uh, yeah, we'll get, uh, get you what we have and, and see if we can go from there, if you guys need anything else, give me a call back.
Very good, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys, happy to work.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks, bye.
Flip it up and hang up.
Yeah.
Well, we'll need to see what he comes up with.
When did, when did Jordan part ways with you guys?
Probably after this project was completed, in the last of the month.
Well, I got, my question is, is how did, how did that, I stopped out there several times and drove up to the pole and he was out there and I, I guess I assumed that, seeing that he was there, I, I don't know how the hell they do all that stuff and all, but I assumed he was taking, logging all that stuff in his computer or in his phone, and then it was gonna be downloaded that day, or it was gonna be, you know, all that, that was the reason he was there, but clearly it wasn't. I guess I don't know what he was doing there then.
Observation of the procedure, um, and we thought it was covered between the contractor and our inspector as far as each location. The word we were getting, that's what we believe. Right now, we'd like to do what we can to figure this out.
I understand, and then...
Well, the way I see it, the landowners have the right to have all that information, I don't care how you get it, and who, who pays for it, but they're not paying for it.
Oh, absolutely not, all right.
You know, I don't, I mean, you can work it out between King and you, but they, they have the right to have those locations on these as-built.
Yes.
And, uh, they need to be correct because, like you say, this here is for a hundred and fifty years from now, and we're all gonna be dead, nobody's gonna remember where they're at.
True.
Someone who's still very much alive cannot find his connections.
Right.
And you mentioned that if push comes to shove, you may have to do some investigation to find some missing.
Yes. And, and, yeah.
Hire somebody, whoever to find, go out and dig it up and find it.
Yeah, I know, and push anything on Dial as far as digging, um, his name just came up because we knew he was such a drainage person and can identify trenches and all of that.
Because that's what it takes, somebody with an eye for that.
Yes.
You know, they take a scoop of dirt and they can look and they, they know whether there's a tile underneath there or not.
Yeah, I think contractors point and how to me, and I still can't see it, just, yeah.
Well, that's why, yeah, the as-built, they obviously, do you have any issues with anything that you would guess isn't connected? Is there any problems out there or anything?
Yeah, you, you, you guys think that everything got connected that was supposed to be connected? You don't have like wet courses or dry air.
I know it's not wet air, thank God, like you have them, but you, are you, you have no see any problems?
I don't see any problems.
We're just, I mean, we're not looking for problems, we're just looking for where all the connections are, but, so, that's good, but, like, allude to Bruce's point, an inspector, that's one of the things they would be inspecting. We, we came across a connection and here it is, here's location.
Yeah, and, and in the business world, I know the guy who does the job is supposed to give you guys the information and you're supposed to put this together.
Yes.
So, I'm not saying it's all your fault, it's not all King's fault, but these guys aren't getting what they paid for, so somebody's gotta get it right.
Yes.
And get it done.
Yes. I was going to have an inspector on the job, though.
That's right.
It's all gone the right way.
Oh, I know, but it's just money thrown out the window.
Absolutely. So, yeah. No, I'm not very moving there and not avoiding responsibility there either. I, I think Dial is the logical one for us to work with more directly, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, just for what he knows, to help us minimize what it's gonna take.
Right.
Well, is there anything else? I think we know the direction we gotta go to get these issues resolved.
Well, Dial, you have my number.
You know it.
Well, I know. Sometimes I think we're on a Christmas list.
They'll be sending you a card.
Evidently. And, and I appreciate it because I didn't, when I called Trish, I, I didn't have a picture of her, but I noticed she had it, hearing the headlight looked like, why? Because I didn't, we didn't know anything about it.
Well, there's no way you guys would know. No. No. That's just, that's one big disappointment to me is, when you discovered that you thought there was a problem, we're the ones that paying for all this, the supervisors here had a lot of work with this, why wouldn't Trish or somebody at least in this county inform that you thought you had a problem? My technician in the office wondered if we had them all. We had no way to know if we did or didn't. Uh, that's the problem. You guys know better than anyone that's out there. I don't think so. Time, paper, and everything else. Yeah, we should've, we should've had more effort into this direction, obviously, where we found out. We thought that Inspector would have left and get the GPS. He didn't always have a GPS. We don't have a lot of none of the GPSes to use, but he could've gotten later. That's why I'm saying we're accepting responsibility. It's so unfortunate, and I believe the project's gonna do its job and do a good job, all kinds of hassles, but I think the intent of the contractor was to get it right. I believe he did.
Well, my question was to Trish was, when Ben comes in here, and we have that bridge that we just finished, we always hold a certain percentage back to make sure that everything's done the way, and I really believe that we should have some kind of retainage for just something like this. That's my opinion. I think we should retain something, whether it's the engineer, some, whether the contractor, however we do that, but it's really unfortunate that we have to find this out. One crop, I mean, it's almost a crop after this whole thing went...
I got a question, Trish. Um, we don't have these ASBILs, we don't have the closing. Why don't we? Shouldn't they be in our hands before we have the final hearing?
To be missed procedure.
So, that we know they're here and they're done before we, because like we've already released, you know, it's done, and then we find out it's not right. So, that's maybe something in the future, we should make sure we have the ASBILs in our hands before we have our final hearing.
So, how long, how long would that take? Would it stretch it out over...
It should take that long.
Well, it should be all put together on, almost on a weekly basis, I would think. I wouldn't think that they'd be, I mean, especially as long as this project started.
Well, if the contractor didn't get paid until they had these done, he would get them done quickly.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of their obligation, right, in the specs, full print even, that's what they're to do.
Yeah.
But, again, we need to nudge them severely, it appears.
Well, that, the ASBIL plant has come from the engineering company.
Based on information from the contractor.
Information provided.
We're supposed to locate them, give us GPS locations, get photographs of each one before they're back built. It's all spelled out very clearly in bold print.
I even called Kane myself and asked for...
ASBILs?
The locations and stuff, and I just need to get them.
So, I think moving forward, that needs to be in our contracts, that the ASBILs are in our hands 30 days before we have our closing hearing. So, as long as we get a chance to look at them.
Yes, excellent plan.
And know that it's done properly.
Because like Bruce said, this information should be continuously being compiled as the project's being completed, so to have the final ASBIL when the project is done shouldn't take that long. It shouldn't be this long after the fact.
Well, guys, if rope checks, to have this work done, shouldn't be out there like a nomad wandering around the field looking for connections. You should have that ability to look at that and say, here, it's right in this area right here, as opposed to just wandering around thinking...
I like running the back a little bit.
Well, I'm sure you do.
I wanna find something, I'm looking.
Right.
Well, and I remind you calling me, I like hearing from you, but it always makes me nervous. Well, it hasn't rained, so I know we don't have any footfalls. Well, as long as we're gonna move forward, I'm fine, but we have to figure out, from our point of view, we have to figure out how to solve this part, because we, this is ridiculous.
So, you're gonna meet with the land, the landowners and get it sorted out?
And get at least approximately locations, and decide how we can approach it to try and expose it.
Okay.
Is there a list we can get of the issues, I mean, from Dial and whomever? If you could go over it with Ben.
Well, they're gonna get that to Rick.
And then you can contact either with me or with her and just say, hey, we located four of the six, or two of the six.
It'll probably have to be the sole one.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
Yeah, after the corn is out.
And in the meantime, we'll get from Kane.
Yeah, gather as much information as they have. Talk with your past employee, Jordan, see if he can retrieve those text messages.
Yes, see if he's got it stored somewhere, yeah.
Yeah.
Because he did take a lot of pictures, and if he didn't erase those, but we also need the notes on what station those are at. We'll figure out what we can get, and Jordan and the contractor...
And I think that actually would be your information that he's keeping from you, being, even though he left, you have a right to that information.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
He was your employee at that time, so...
I don't look for any issues there to object or refuse, I don't look for that.
Okay.
Matter of fact, one of our guys, one of our engineers, young engineer's cousins too, sold it to their family, even.
Is there a timeframe in which we should check back, or?
Well...
I mean, you guys...
He's not gonna want a lot of digging anymore.
Yeah, they're gonna be...
Not at all, but like, for you and Dial to get together, and just to report back to us on...
And if Kane sends you any information, he ought to be able to let us know that I got this amount of information, or Jordan gave me 10 pictures, or...
Yeah.
He's keeping her in loop, and she can send it.
Yeah, I'll give you guys an update. Yes.
Please.
Final means.
Yes.
The pictures, you referred to pictures. Do they end up here in the county? Will Trish end up with those?
I don't think so. It's, because it's what stages it add, I mean, it's a variable. Typically, no. It's more information, we just make sure it was done.
Was there supposed to be pictures in our room? Any tie-ins with locations?
The contractors are responsible for writing the photographs of the engineers showing each tile connection before it is back built, and then they're all sorts, provide a GPS location for each tile, and the size of material of the tile connected. That's all information we're supposed to have.
And they, they claim that they gave it to Jordan, so we'll see what you got.
Yeah.
So, how often did Jordan send that information to the office?
I don't know. It wasn't to me, and I had this to know. We would've probably gone over it, Jason or Derek in their office. I'll check with them, see if anything was handled that way.
I mean, with computer technology and these phones and stuff, that information should've been downloaded, you know, like every day to you at the office.
It's something we probably wouldn't necessarily do every day, but equally, I mean, yeah, we might only have done two, and certainly didn't do any, other days it might be two, maybe three, but yeah, equally be the best way to handle it.
So, it's supposed to be at your office all the time?
Hopefully. I mean, I don't know how it was transmitted, how it would've been saved, but I have to check with them. I do know that Derek's somehow, he can happen to have lost all those sort of emails. I was in his office when it happened, he was very disturbed, so things like that happen out of our control, but I will check that he was getting them, Jason was getting them, how they were coming in. Yeah. Let's see what Kane gets us, and work with that list. Yeah, I think I can give you an update in a couple weeks, hopefully they get the information and...
Thank you.
We'll see what they have. I can just keep giving you updates.
That would be great. Appreciate it.
So, did you list something we could give a copy of, or?
Yeah, I'll go over with it.
Please, I understand, and I'm gonna try and understand what it was on the...
You're good.
I understand. The ratings, that and worse and worse.
Anything else? Have to, I think we're at least on the right track and hopefully get some resolution to the issues.
Oh, yeah, nobody can have it to me.
Okay. Anything for anybody else? Trish?
Motion to adjourn.
You need to go on to Drainage District.
I'll go on to Drainage, yeah.
For a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, out of drainage?
No, motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Please, motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.